Good evening. It is Tuesday, May 9th. It is 6:30. We have a full dais. I'm calling this meeting to order. The City of Bastrop preserves the right to reconvene, recess, or realign the regular session or called executive session or order of business at any time prior to adjournment. I believe I have exercised that right more than any other mayor, so I know y'all know that we can do that. So we are called to order and tonight, I am so happy, on December 1st of 2023, I was at the Cedar Creek Intermediate School and I got to visit with their student council. And their teacher, Toni Malone, reached out to me and I think she was shocked I returned the email, but we got the date set up. Ms. Malone's in the back of the room with her two students and I would like Gabriella Moscato, Macedo, we just practiced it, Macedo, right? Come on up Gabriella. And Rebecca Blybtral, Blyb Troy, Blyb Troy, right? Because they told me trout without a T and then she was like, no, that's not how you say it. So trying to get those straight. They are both sixth graders. You have to face the audience. I know it's awkward. They are both sixth graders and they both, their favorite subject is math and we all know that warms my heart. Gabriella is thinking she wants to be a neurosurgeon, so I'm keeping up with her because I may need her sooner rather than later. And Rebecca is thinking she might want to be a nurse practitioner. They asked me fantastic questions when I visited with the student council. This is their first time to be in council chambers. They're a little bit nervous, but I assured them that you guys would help with saying the pledges. So if you would please rise, these two young ladies will lead us in the pledges.
(inaudible)
They did a great job. Don't go anywhere. They did a great job. Let's give them a round of applause. Colin's going to take your picture. Hang on Colin. Ms. Malone, why don't you come join your students because you do an outstanding job and being the, helping with student councils, one of those above and beyond duties. Let's give her a round of applause as well. Excellent. If you would please remain standing, we have the senior pastor from Bastrop Christian Church, Dustin Barti, and he is going to lead us in our invocation tonight.
Let us pray. Lord, we are honored to be here tonight. We are thankful for the privilege it is to get to, for these wonderful public servants to get to discuss and collaborate on the matters involving our city. We love where we live and we pray tonight that you fill this space with creativity. Fill them with wisdom and that you pour out your special blessing upon their minds and on their hearts through all the different matters that are before them. We're so thankful for the great servant leadership present in this space and we ask it continue to flourish for the benefit of all Bastropians. In your name we pray. Amen.
Amen. You may be seated. Thank you Pastor Barti. All right. Got a lot going on up here. Okay, we are going to start with the mayor's report and I have a couple of things before we launch into it. And one of them is that Ms. Lee was not, Councilmember Lee was not with us at our last council meeting because as she has explained to me, birthdays are not a 24-hour event. They can be stretched into an entire month and can sometimes involve trips. And so we have, we, mostly this end of the dais enjoyed your birthday cupcakes because Ms. Franklin didn't know that you weren't, she was, she had ordered the cupcakes. So we have a birthday card and if we could give Councilmember Lee a round of applause for her birthday. Okay, and then I had a couple of other things. We had an election. Anybody hear about it? And you, some of you may be wondering why we're not canvassing votes tonight. It's against the law. That's the main reason. So the soonest that we can canvass those votes is on May 16th. So that's when we will be meeting on May 16th. And on May 16th, we will be swearing in Councilmember Plunkett for a three-year term because he was filling an unexpired term. And we will be swearing in Cynthia Sanders Myers for a unfulfilled term that Mayor Pro Tim Rogers has left for that unexpired term. Let's give those two folks a round of applause. Also, in accordance with state law, there will be a runoff for the mayor's race. That election will be on June 10th and we will canvas that vote on June 20th, but we can't call that election until we canvass the results. Like, we're just following state law. If it doesn't make sense, please don't fuss at me or the city secretary. We're just trying to follow state law. So more about that on May 16th. One other thing that I did not have, actually a couple of things that I did not have in our, in the pictures that we'll go through in a minute. I wanted to bring your attention to the fact that we have a gentleman that was born in Bastrop, raised in Bastrop, is a World War II veteran and turned 99 on May 2nd. And his name is Pete Justice. He lives in Austin now, but he comes to Bastrop the first Thursday of every month so he can be at the Farm Street Opry. He sits on the front row and he's just as sharp as a tack and he served on the Navy destroyer, destroyer, the USS Lob. And if you get a chance to come to the Farm Street Opry, you want to meet Mr. Justice. He is just a fabulous, fabulous guy. So I wanted to recognize him tonight. And, oh, and the city manager and I haven't talked about what she's going to go over, so I may be stealing her thunder on a little bit of this, but I want everyone to know that the notice to proceed has been given on Old Austin Highway. Construction will start on May 30th and it will be done no later than August 4th. So yay, we're going to, that project will be getting off the ground. And several of us were at the birthday party for Visit Bastrop last night. It was their fifth birthday, fifth birthday, and it was a great celebration. And I know, I think everybody but Mayor, Mayor Pro Tim Rogers was driving, but everybody else was there. We had a great time. And I want to congratulate the executive director, Susan Smith, because she was nominated to be on the Destination Marketing Accreditation Program Board. So that's, that's a big deal for her and we're super excited for that. Okay, let's get, let's launch into this. In the upper left-hand corner, I attended the county chambers, the Heart of Texas County Chamber event. It was a lot of fun. Enjoyed doing that. And the picture right below that is the door of the, is the gate on the dog park. And the reason that I'm showing that picture is the shelter pet safety folks give free neutering, spay and neutering. And so there's a scan card because we thought the most appropriate place to let people know where they could get free spay and neutering might be the dog park where people with animals might actually be. So we appreciate Public Works and our social media folks that got that taken care of. Then just below that, you will see Steph Lewis. We had the, our first Main Street Town Hall and hats off to Candace Spotts and her team and all of the hardworking volunteers that serve on the Main Street Board. And again, several council members and myself and the city manager were all at that meeting. The biggest picture, no doubt, no, no accident, of course, was the groundbreaking on the water treatment plant. Very excited that the City of Bastrop is going to have their water needs with just excellent water taken care of for the next couple of decades. And I was assured by Curtis that that water treatment plant would be done and on December 24th of 2024. And I don't know why they picked Christmas Eve, but that's the date he told me. Just below that is, I attended the Spring Fest event. I'm the little bitty short one in the middle and on each side of me is the Children's Advocacy Center Executive Director Megan Webb and Kristy Glasper from CASA. It was a great time. They were a little worried about the weather, but it ended up being just a perfect, perfect day. Next to that, that is Lily Fields. And at my last council meeting, I talked about the fact that I had gone to the Salinas Awards. And then since the last council meeting, they let the seniors have a show at Lost Pines Arts Center. And I got to meet Lily and that's the picture that allowed her to win the Bluebonnet Budding Artist Award. And she got a scholarship for that. If we go up to the top, everything, all of the next three pictures were all last Thursday. It was a busy day. We started with the National Day of Prayer and it was just a great time for everybody to be together. And I think that was my sixth one because that was outside. We even did it during COVID. So it was nice to be a part of that. And then my friend Terry Moore shared her talents and sang some country and western and some Patsy Cline. Scoot down Colin, there she is. And there's Terry and I with the Farm Street Opry Band. We also had Lynn Landry singing that night. That was a lot of fun. And just below that was the ribbon cutting for David Weekly at the Addleton Project. And then I was at the Addleton Open House on Sunday and I'll show, I'll have some pictures of that next time. So let's go to the next page. And these, this was the things that I did after I posted my report. I think I've mentioned all of this. So Colin, we can go on to the next. And I want to call out and let, make sure everybody knows that on Thursday night at 5:30 in this very room, if you have questions that you want to ask the appraiser, and if you got your love letter and you not sure why you like it or don't like it, or you want some questions about it, that is a great time to come ask Fon Collins. She'll be with us. And I also, I wanted to call out, I'm very proud of the fact that the TML Small Conference is going to be here in Bastrop and there's going to be over 200 people attending that. And when they come, they tend to hang out that night and they'll spend some money. And we always like when they leave their tax dollars behind. If you live in Hunter's Crossing, there is an open house on the 13th. And council, you've all received an email and I want to, we've already talked about the special council meeting that we'll have on the 16th, but I also wanted to bring to your attention that there's a Region 10 virtual meeting on May 17th. So I think that is it for me, Mayor Pro Tim Rogers. Anything you'd like to share with us?
No ma'am. The drive was wonderful, but that's all.
She's showing pretty pictures from Arkansas, so I know she's enjoying it.
Just making me jealous.
There you go. Councilmember Plunkett?
Yeah, of course, I was, you know, a little bit consumed with, you know, the little Saturday thing. Yeah. So I'd like to thank all my supporters and my opponent. I mean, Carrie Kayler, you know, did a great job. She ran a good campaign and, you know, I hope she came out of the experience better. And so, no, I was very pleased with how everything went, of course. I wanted to welcome to Main Street, Bearded Bakers. They, they got open, I think, a week and a half ago or so. Check it out. Excellent cookies. Everything they've had in there has been amazing.
I think they're still technically soft open and he's for sure, for sure, open in next month.
Yeah, but I don't mind, I don't think he'd mind if he came in and bought some.
No, not at all. I was buying stuff there yesterday. He was very happy to be selling whatever he has. Yeah, it's good stuff.
Yep. Also, I wanted to shout out, you mentioned the fifth birthday of Visit Bastrop. And I wanted to shout out to Lee Harrell and Becky Wumble for all that they did to make that organization happen. There was a lot of wrangling that went on to, to get that organization to where it was. Couldn't have done it without either one of them. And, oh, also, we had a, a movie filmed here in town called, it's going to be called The House of Abraham. So it's a horror movie, probably, you know, a little bit low budget that we donated a couple of meals from the restaurant for, out at Spiderwood. And, but they're a really fun group and just shows, you know, what the movie industry, you know, can do for us. And it was, it was a lot of fun and look forward to, to seeing the movie that at least was done in Bastrop. And it's going to be fun. Thank you.
Great. Councilmember Kirkland?
Thank you, Mayor. I attended my boards of commission meetings, the Cultural Arts Commission, the Parks Board, and we had a special meeting for the Parks Board to go over the first version of the Parks Master Plan. Went to the Farm Street Opry and Solitary Moore singing to us and, and a goodbye to our mayor there. Attended the Simsboro Groundbreaking and moved a shovel of dirt. And they wouldn't let me get on the big loader and push dirt around with the machinery, but you know, it is what it is. Went to the BEDC Board Meeting and the Visit Bastrop Birthday.
Councilmember Crouch?
I didn't really have a whole lot. I went to the, the fifth birthday party for Visit Bastrop and that was a, a nice, nice event at the Convention Center. And then the only other thing I really did was I represented well Bastrop at the MS 150. And I was bummed at, because it ends at Caulfield, at College Station and they, last year they let them make a
Whatever.
They let them make a lap around the field and this year they wouldn't let us on the field. So they cut me off before I could get through the gate. So I tried, but I couldn't, couldn't get in.
You were that close.
That's all I did.
Well, congratulations on completing that race. Councilmember Lee?
Good evening, Bastrop. Thank you, Mayor. So I too wanted to congratulate Councilmember Plunkett on his election win and Cynthia Sanders. And, and to, I spoke with many of the candidates during this election cycle. I think I provided encouragement to everyone because I like when people get engaged and want to be part of the community. So big kudos to everyone that, you know, made them come out of their comfort zone and, and ran a race. And I hope that you will continue, win or lose, to be active in the community. And then to the voters who came out and vote. We could have had higher numbers, but we appreciate those of you that came out. We still have an election coming up and hope that you will make the decision to come out and vote for the next mayor. I did do a little bit of traveling, a month-long traveling, a month of traveling for my birthday, but I was able to fit a few things in. I did attend my first BEDC meeting and I appreciate the mayor for that appointment. Any opportunity that I can to be in a different space and learn something more so that I can be a better activist and, and council member for the community, I take advantage of those opportunities. So thank you for that appointment. I, even though I was traveling, I was not driving, but I watched every meeting virtually during the travel. So I did keep in touch with what's going on in Bastrop. I do want to encourage everyone to come out to the taxpayer town hall meeting. This is your opportunity to voice your concerns about your taxes. So please make some time to come out from that, for that. I will be at the TML Conference this week. There's a lot going on this week, including the budget meeting that I always dread, but Tracy does a good job of helping me figure out what those numbers mean. And then the last thing I wanted to mention was, oh my God, Bastrop was popping all weekend. If you did not find something to do in Bastrop last weekend, Jesus Christ, someone told me, there's nothing to do here. No, you're not looking for anything to do here. Because I was busy Friday and Saturday and hibernated all day Sunday. So kudos to the Cultural Arts Commission, the guys with the Bird Festival. I was back and forth at the Arts Center multiple times. Like, there was not enough to do in Bastrop. There was plenty. So kudos to that. And then the last thing I wanted to mention was the Music Man tickets are on sale at the Bastrop Opera House. We have all been working really hard on this play. It's been a fun experience. It runs from May 19th through June the 4th. Tickets are going fast. So I definitely hope that if you enjoy the Music Man or want to see what the Music Man is about, please come out. We love to have you in the audience. Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you, Councilmember Lee. I, I go to church with Patrick Lowe and he told me he's lost 15 pounds from dancing at, during rehearsals. So if, it's a different weight loss program. You can always be in a play. All right, city manager.
Mayor, oh, sorry. I have to interrupt you just because I'm the, oh, Mayor Pro Tim. It is your birthday.
Yeah, it's coming up.
So we, we, the council would like to wish you a very happy birthday.
Why, thank you very much. Thank you, thank you, thank you, thank you. I appreciate that. Thank you very much. City manager, we're on item 4C. Council, we're on the top of page two. City manager report.
Thank you, Mayor and Council, and thank you for being so gracious about my absence last council meeting. I will say for the record, I absolutely love my job, but I love the job of mom first. And I will always be mom first before I'm city manager. So, so we're going to take off and it has been a very, very, very busy month and the, and the busyness continues through the summer. I don't think we're going to lay off the gas until probably Christmas time. Next, it was still is next Monday at 6:30 at El Nuevo. So I'm alternating days and evenings. This one is in the evening. Come by, have a cup of coffee and just share your concerns, criticism, and anything else we can do to help improve Bastrop. Always have an open ear. The mayor mentioned the Hunter's Crossing Open House. That's on Saturday, May 13th. It's at the Hunter's Crossing Pavilion. Please, folks who live in Hunter's Crossing, come and get some Q and A. There are some proposed and potential developments in that area. So it would be really good to have a good showing in that open house. And we start at 10:30. So. Everybody mentioned the budget planning meeting. That's this Friday from noon to 4:00. And we are going to be doing our final tweaks to balancing act after the council has their final comments on Friday and then we will launch that to the public. For those of you that don't know, you get an opportunity to have some input on the general fund budget where you would like us to see more dollars spent and dollars taken away and allocated to something else. So it is a great opportunity to have some public input and it will inform what the council eventually passes. So please make your voice heard behind a computer screen. The app is very easy to get to and we will post that after Friday's meeting. May 22nd, also noon to 4:00 is the Leadership Summit, first of its kind for us. We are working more collaboratively with all of our partner agencies, taxing entities especially. The city, the county, the school district, the EDC and the chamber will all gather and we will share information on what we're all doing. Specifically, our capital improvement plans and how they relate and intersect. So the school just had a bond approved. We've overlaid where those potential school sites are. We're overlaying the county's master transportation plan, our transportation plan, all the water and sewer lines so that folks can see everything that's going on. One, and two, for us to be able to share the resources and not double and triple tax the residents when we have some intersects and we're able to work together to accomplish the same mission. So very super excited about that. The maps are looking amazing. We did remove TikTok from the city computers and also at the library. So if anybody shows up at the library and tries to get on wifi and tries to get on TikTok, you won't be able to do that. And we're just preempting what the state government is going to tell us we need to do anyway. Haven't had a lot of pushback and it's been removed for several days now. We do have a Main Street ad hoc group. They meet on the last Friday of every month. Right now, their main focus has been signs and things in the regulatory environment, how quick they can get a CO, the signs that are and are not allowed, and really how we are enforcing the existing ordinances on the books. So we are, my hope is we have put two folks from that group on the Main Street Board. So my hope is that we can begin to address those meetings within the framework of Main Street and they get absorbed and we just continue to move forward. I think there's a, I think there's a place for like a legislation committee or something like that on Main Street. Old Iron Bridge discussions, they continue. I have a litany of folks have come into my office because it is the 100-year celebration, apparently earlier in the year. And we are hoping to get a 100-year celebration by the October timeframe. By that point, we should know if we've been awarded the grant and/or if the council's going to decide to go forward with a debt issuance to get the bridge repairs done. The grant is $14 million or so. That is the opinion of probable cost in the engineer's report. And I believe we're going to have the same, if not a little less availability in the debt service fund without any increase to taxes. So we're going to have to have those discussions coming up. We are going to also be talking about in the budget, the drainage, transportation, and the street maintenance and rehabilitation plan. Those have giant numbers associated with them. And we've got to plan for the future and plan a path forward without overburdening the residents. So it's going to be a very sensitive balancing act on how we accomplish all of that, but I have full faith that we can put our heads together and get it done. Lastly, we have the Development Advisory Group that actually meets tomorrow. Last Thursday, we made some monumental efforts. And as I told the council, when we, when you hired me, when we talked about the code, I said, a lot of it is process. And to be quite honest, we haven't touched a lot of the code. We've touched some low-hanging fruit that does have some impact, but most of it has been process. The site development process, the horizontal before you go to vertical, that has been the biggest pinch point, pain point. It's taken a long time. Trey and I met with a, a small group of the big group and I think we are on a very good path forward. We're going to present that to the main group tomorrow. That's going to inform the commercial process as well. And my hope is that we get a process that is more than 12 months or so long at this point, that we get it shrunk to about four months. That is the plan. And that reaps rewards on all sides. One, we get taxable value on the ground sooner. And two, it is less expensive on the developer's end because, as you know, time is money and the interest monster is always hungry. If we can get it there, we don't need to incentivize anything. That's, that's the plan. If we're efficient, I don't have to put out dollars later on. George will be sharing the survey results and the path forward, although I'm kind of feeling like we left George behind a long time ago. Poor guy. We knew what the survey results were going to be sort of from the anecdotal information that we received. And again, let's work on the process, the environment, the staffing, and the rest of it will come. So to that point, staff, the council has been very gracious in adding staff to development services. So I wanted to give you an update. You, this is the new organizational chart. There is a vacancy for the director position. There is a vacancy in the development engineer position. There's a vacancy in the planner position. All of the customer service division has been filled and I have one vacancy for an electrical inspector. However, my building official that we've just hired on is also a certified electrician. So he's able to do those things. We have some absolutely awesome talent that we've brought on board. Everything from a plan reviewer inspector here who was teaching building trades at ACC to folks who worked for the city of Kyle, folks who've worked for Hayes County, folks that we stole from Bastrop County, and folks that have been the industry for a long time. So I am super, super, super pleased with the team that we are putting together. And I am going to reserve the director position to be filled toward the end. And that, that really is because I want the team to gel. I want the team to have some cohesion before we bring in a quote-unquote coach. We all know, a bad coach can be very detrimental to a team. And I want the team to be so strong that if the coach ain't cutting it, the coach goes and not the team. In Planning Commission coming up, Alan and I are working on a planned development district, also known as a PDD, sometimes called a PUD, Planned Unit Development District. And this is also, again, worked through the code. We remove this as a city, as part of the B3 Code. And this is probably one of the most flexible tools in the legislative process. And so the introduction of this back gives us some opportunity to work through the development process without undoing the code in areas where perhaps it doesn't need to be undone. So this is going to be in front of the Planning Commission this month and is expected to be in front of you in the month of June. So that's our hope. And that's all I have. That's, that's, that's a lot in two weeks worth of work.
Absolutely. One thing, you're, you said we're presenting to the group on May 9th, but today's May 9th. So it really is tomorrow, correct? Okay. Drew goes, but this says May 9th.
Sorry. Yes, tomorrow, May 10th.
All right. We don't want anybody, the whole point is we don't want anybody to miss it or think that they missed it.
Correct, correct.
All right. I'm going to do three, and just so everyone knows, I'm going to do 4D, 4E, and 4F. I'm going to do the three proclamations, then I'm going to go to citizen comments. And then we're going to go back because the 4G and 4H is possibly less interesting to some folks. So I'm going to come down front and I'm going to ask Chief Stefanik and her team to come forward because the first thing we're going to do is item 4D. and her team to come forward, because the first thing we're going to do is item 4D. All right. Absolutely. And they're so happy to be here. Come on, Stefanik. Chief Stefanik, why don't you introduce the team you brought with you, and then I'll read the proclamation?
First, we have Assistant Chief Hamilton. This is Sergeant Sanford. This is Officer Jalen West, Sergeant Caleb Smith, and Officer Weir. And the three on the end are night shift officers, so they're itching to get out of here and get back to work. I apologize, and I'm Vicki Stefanik. I'm the chief of police for the city of Bastrop.
Let's give him a round of applause. So, so very proud of our police force. Whereas citizens of Bastrop gather to recognize and honor our law enforcement offices for their faithful service and sacrifice while protecting our community and safeguarding our democracy. There are more than 800,000 sworn enforcement officers serving in communities across the United States, including some of these folks right here. Nearly 60,000 assaults against law enforcement officers are reported each year, resulting in over 18,000 injuries. Since the first recorded death in 1791, more than 23,785 law enforcement officers in the United States have made the ultimate sacrifice and been killed in the line of duty, including one member of the Bastrop Police Department. In 2022, 245 fallen heroes throughout the nation have been killed in the line of duty, including 35 from the state of Texas. The names of these dedicated public servants are engraved on the walls of the National Law Enforcement Memorial in Washington, DC. And the names of the heroic Texas Peace Officers are engraved on the Texas Peace Officer Memorial in Austin, Texas. May 15th is designated as Peace Officers Memorial Day in honor of all fallen officers and their families, and the US flag should be flown at half-staff. Congress has designated the calendar week that May 15th falls be known as National Police Week. Therefore, I, Connie Schrader, Mayor of the City of Bastrop, do hereby proclaim May 15th, 2023 through May 21st, 2023, as Police Officer Week in Bastrop. It is my solemn wish and prayer that none of you are ever found on a wall, and that you be safe.
City manager saying it behind him.
Oh, I was like, we're trying to get out of the way. I'm going to hide behind all of them. Thank you, guys. I've known one of them since she was this tall, so it's a little bit hard. Okay, we're going on to item 4E, a proclamation of the City Council of the City of Bastrop, Texas, recognizing May 21st through the 27th as Public Works Week. Mr. Hancock, you want to bring your team up? You know who you are. You might as well start walking this way. Thanks for coming. Mr. Hancock, you want to introduce yourself and your team?
We've got Paul Gonzalez, Michael Tuchin, Robert Hiltshire, and James Wilson.
And you are?
Curtis Hancock, Director of Public Works.
There we go. All right. Public Works. Every time you drive down the street, you flush a toilet, you get clean water, you complain about a pothole, you have a tree problem. If you've got problems, this is the solution. This is the solution. And the great part is how often you don't need to make a call because they're taking care of things in advance. And we are very, very blessed to have their dedicated service, and we're very appreciative of it. Whereas Public Works, infrastructure facilities and services provided in our communities are an integral part of the citizens' health, safety, and well-being. Such facilities and services could not be provided without the dedicated efforts of Public Works professionals, engineers, managers, and employees at all levels of government in the private sector, who are responsible for planning, building, operation, and maintenance of transportation, water supply, water treatment, solid waste systems, public buildings, and other structures and facilities essential to serve our citizens. It is the public interest for the citizens, civic leaders, and children in our country to understand and appreciate Public Works programs and in their communities. The quality and effectiveness of these facilities, as well as their planning, design, and construction, are dependent upon the efforts and skill of Public Works officials. The year 2023 marks the 63rd Annual National Public Works Week, sponsored by American Public Works Association. Now, therefore, I, Connie Schrader, Mayor of the City of Bastrop, do hereby proclaim May 21st through the 27th, 2023, as Public Works Week. Let's give him a round of applause.
Now, Mayor, I will say that this group of people, as Trey so aptly points out, don't ever get the same amount of love as PD and fire. So can we please stand up and give these folks a round of applause?
Yes, absolutely. Trey and I laugh that the police and fire, you know who they're counting on the road to get them to those first responders? In order to respond, you got to have some Public Works, folks. We're just saying, just saying. All right. Item 4F, a proclamation of the City Council of the City of Bastrop, recognizing May 13th as World Migratory Bird Day. And I know I've got a couple foot, there she is. Come on, there we go. And we, and last time I saw you, we were at Bali X, and you were exercising with a bird on your shoulder.
That's true.
Yes. And Councilmember Kirkland is the liaison to the Parks Board as well. Whereas World Migratory Bird Day is a campaign to raise awareness for the conversation of migratory birds and the habits they live in. This event is an awareness-raising campaign, heightening the need for conservation of migratory birds in their habitats. It aims to draw attention to the threats faced by migratory birds, their ecological importance, and the need for international cooperation to conserve them. The theme is Birds Connect Our World. The migratory routes of different animals cover a wide range of habitats. They cross contrasting landscapes and terrain that would not have any connection otherwise, such as deserts and oceans. They'll celebrate how birds connect these habitats as well as the people that live there. Whereas as the human population on Earth grows, many of the most important stopover and breeding sites for migratory birds are suffering as a result. The degradation of these areas around the world could have a devastating effect on migratory birds. So as well as celebrating migration routes, this year is also about raising awareness of the importance of protecting these key sites. Now, therefore, I, Connie Schrader, Mayor of the City of Bastrop, do hereby proclaim May 13th as World Migratory Bird Day. Let's give them a round of applause. Okay, as promised, we're going to be going to citizen comments, and I have a stack, and I am doing my best to call them in order. And if I, if I mess up, I apologize. The first one I have is Jeanette Watson. If you will please come forward and state your name and address. You will have three minutes. And Colin, do we, is our timer working? There you go.
I'm timed. Honorable Mayor, esteemed council, and Attorney Roderickus, I considered it an honor to be able to address you tonight regarding a concern for Bastrop's future and our young people. I know that many towns and some larger cities with a less conservative view than Bastrop have refused to allow gay pride parades and festivals in their city because of the lawless content that often follows and the unfortunate rise in teen suicide. I don't know why it has to be that whenever we overstep a mark, our children suffer. But perhaps that's why God said repeatedly and succinctly that when you parade your sin as sodom and try not to hide it, then you bring destruction upon yourself. And so it's my concern that, that we are allowing a gay pride festival in Bastrop because lawlessness follows. I mean, now what's to stop us from saying that the Ku Klux Klan can't come set a cross in Fisherman's Park and set it on fire? What's to stop us now from saying that people that come in to burn our government buildings and tear down our statues don't have the same rights? When our founding fathers established our constitution, they knew that government came from God, a government of laws, which they gave us a republic, not a democracy and empire of men, but a republic, which is empire of laws. Because in the first paragraph of our Declaration of Independence, it says, "Separate and equal station that the laws of nature and nature's God have entitled us to." They knew that government comes from God. And so the first article they put in our constitution was the article which now we know called the Establishment Clause. Unfortunately, in recent years, that's been twisted to protect the lawlessness instead of those that uphold the laws of nature, which is the will of our maker and nature's God, which is his revealed will in Scripture. And so I plead with you to not be duped by thinking that equal rights cannot be, you know, protected for those that are trying to uphold the law and not the lawless. Thank you for hearing me tonight.
Thank you, Ms. Watson. And your address is 343 Leisure Cedar Creek. Is that correct?
And often it's not leisurely, yes.
Is it, oh, it's often it's not leisure, okay. I thought I said it wrong. All right. The next person I have signed up to speak is Margarita Igoe. If you would please come forward and state your name and address. You will have three minutes. And council, she also, the city secretary has given you, they all have a copy of the letter that you asked to be passed out.
When pride comes...
Would you please state your name and address?
My name is Margarita. I live on 27 Dos Cortes, Smithville, Texas.
Thank you.
When pride comes, then comes disgrace. But with humility comes wisdom, Proverbs 11:2. I was born in Mexico, and I have been in this country for 24 years. I have three children, and my oldest is graduating from A&amp;M this coming Thursday, and he was accepted at the Austin Police Academy. I'm here to advocate for the protection of our children. There are sanctuary cities for immigrants, sanctuary places for animals. I want to make Bastrop County a sanctuary county to protect our children's innocence and integrity from false and harmful ideologies. I'm here to ask this governing body to stop the pride parades and drag shows in Bastrop. We cannot sacrifice the souls of our children for the sake of a small population that wants to force ideologies that are detrimental to our foundation as a society. Children as young as five years old and our teenagers are victims of a severe agenda from the LGBT+ group. Let me share with you this. The San Francisco Gay Men's Choir released a video with a song, and these are the lyrics. "We will convert your children. You are just frightened. You think that we will corrupt your kids if our agenda goes unchecked? Fine, just once, you are correct. We will convert your children. It happens bit by bit, quietly and suddenly, and you will barely notice it. We are coming for your children." Have you ever read Michael Swift's gay revolutionary essay? He wrote this text in 1987. It is called "The Gay Agenda." "We shall sodomize your sons, emblems of your feeble masculinity. Your sons shall become our minions and do our bidding." Mayor and council officials, please listen to the petition of this mother. Protect the children of Bastrop County. Thank you.
Thank you. You're all aware of the decorum, and we're, this is a business meeting. So we're not going to boo, we're not going to clap. We're going to conduct business. The next person signed up to speak is Benny Carson. Is Benny Carson here? Benny Carson, all right. The next person signed up to speak is Michelle Clark. And the last person is Monica Carson.
I signed up, but I wasn't going to speak. I just...
I'm sorry. Monica Carson lives at 108 Nichols Lane in Bastrop. She does not wish to speak, but she is in opposition to city comments against any pride or drag show parades in Bastrop. Madam Secretary, do we have anyone else signed up for citizen comments?
No, Mayor.
No, we do not. All right. We are done with citizen comments. And I, I thought somebody said something, I'm sorry. I realize there's one thing I forgot to do on Mayor's report, so we're going to go back to that really quick. And what we forgot, what I forgot to address is that tonight is Mayor Pro Tem Rogers' last meeting. She's figured out she's not needed for a quorum on May 16th, but she might be needed in Arkansas on May 16th. So she brought all her stuff and is planning on leaving after the council meeting. And council is very, very happy and pleased for all of the hard work that you've done, not to mention the Sugar Shack and all that you've brought to the community. And as a business owner, I think it's very inspiring to be a female business owner with a successful business. We wish you and Clint nothing but success in the future. We've got a card, we've got a couple of other things. And for those of you in the audience, we have cake. So we're going to take a quick recess and celebrate. Drew, Ms. Franklin, you want to bring a couple of things forward? There we go. Got an orchid. So council, we're going, let's see. It is 7:17. We're going to take a quick break, and Colin's going to come take a picture of us all around Ms. Drew with her goodies. Can we give Mayor Pro Tem Rogers a round of applause, please? All right. It is 7:29. We are back in regular session, and Mayor Pro Tem Rogers has asked for the next 30 minutes to make a speech, correct? Oh, no. Okay, okay. I just, I wanted to give her a chance, I'm just saying. All right. Counsel, we're in the middle of page two. We're on item 4G, Presentation of the Fiscal Year 2023 Quarterly Report for January through March. Ms. Creo, it's all yours.
So Mayor and council, Colin, will you go to the live link on the dashboard? Set link at the bottom. Oh, there you go. So I promised you a simplified version of a quarterly report, and that is what you have in front of you today. We have our nine focus areas, and all of the embedded reports that were in your several hundred-page book are now in that At-a-Glance dashboard. I will say, I really have to give it to Tracy and team and Alicia, who just took off with this and ran with it. I think we paid maybe an extra $1,000, Tracy, for some programming, but it was things we already had in our toolbox. And so I want to just go to organizational...
But we didn't get the link in the packet, correct?
Uh, no, you may not.
I, I didn't see it. I was, I always give them the benefit of the doubt. Instead of you didn't send, I, I, you know, always kind of...
So if you go to the, we'll show you how to get there. If you go to the website, wow. That's okay. If you go to the website, and right at the front is Transparency Center, and you go all the way to the right, and there's dashboards. The other thing that's been turned on here, and it's been turned on for a little while, but we never really bring attention to it, is the checkbook register. It's live as well. So if you go to organizational excellence, I believe it is, that's just one of the items I want to highlight. You can scroll all the way down. You'll be able to see permitting activity. You'll see quarter-to-quarter employee hires, promotion... You'll see quarter-to-quarter employee hires, promotions, lateral transfers, training. You can see our training is a little bit blank right now, but rest assured, we're going to pick that up. And if you scroll all the way down, you'll see the MyGov data. How many permits have been issued? You'll see Planning Department requests. You'll see some valuation changes of how much permitting activity and development activity has happened in the last two quarters. So that's just one of the, that's just one of the tiles. There is just a litany of information. And as we get further, we will just begin to turn on even more information. And the goal is that our partners, our community assets, they are embedded in here, but we want them to stand out a little bit more because Council has significant investments in some of them, so we want to make sure that they are spending wisely. Any questions?
Outstanding. Councilmember Lee.
Thank you, Mayor. So the one question I wrote on this was, why don't we get the paper presentation anymore? And now I know why. So my second question is, is there a way to export any of this information if we wanted to print it out, or if someone wanted to print it out? Because sometimes I do like to maybe print out individual pages.
I'm not sure. Colin, will you see if there's an export in any one of the tiles, any one of the reports? Tracy, do you know if there's an export?
Oh, no, my manuals.
All of them would be credible, you know?
Print.
I don't know. They're all going to share.
Yeah, it's all shares.
Yeah, if you share it, you may be able to download and print it.
Mm-hmm.
Okay, so we can play with it, is what I'm hearing. And if a council person has a request, then if they'll share that with you, City Manager, we'll do our best to take care of that.
Absolutely. And the same thing with revenue and expenses and projects. We are really making a concerted effort to make sure our project data is up to date, so that when you do click into a project, that you do see what we are doing, spend, spend-wise, and also where the project is. So all of the projects are up there as well. We've harped on Fabiola to make sure she and her staff really have this up to date and that it's robust. And so when our folks click on it, they're not reading last month's information. So.
Excellent. Mayor Pro Tem Rogers.
I just wanted to know something. I am so proud of the hire, of hiring you.
Oh, thank you.
This was wonderful. This is what we've been asking for. It makes it clear to the, to the, to the public. They can, if they have questions, it shows the transparency, shows Tracy's confident in the job she's doing, which we are confident. But she's so confident, she's letting anybody see it. I mean, who else wants to open up their checkbook and let everybody see?
Exactly.
I mean, so we should be very proud of all of our staff, and thank you for making it, because there's no doubt now. They can't say, well, you didn't do it. I can't see. Well, here it is. So thank you for making that effort.
Thank you, Mayor Pro Tem Rogers. Councilmember Crouch?
Yes, I just want to piggyback off of what you guys just said. And thank you for putting all of the dashboard together in the IT department. I know everybody had a whole lot of input to put into that in a really short amount of time. And it's going to be really good to go in there and just look at things as you want to look at them. And so thank you for doing that. And everybody in Bastrop ought to be thanking everyone for putting, putting that on there so that it's accessible to everybody in town. So.
I don't think anybody's as more thankful as Candace.
Yeah, yeah, right.
Yeah. Honestly, you guys, if you're around, if you were around City Hall when they were putting it, it was a phenomenal amount of work, and that was not including printing things out and making copies and binding and all of that. And it's, it's very, very nice, very much appreciated. And certainly gives us the opportunity that if there's additional information that's needed, or if there's a particular project, it's easy to, like, okay, well, we'll add that and start working on it and go from there.
Exactly. Especially as it relates to the hot ticket items, as we're talking about CIP, as we're talking about budget, as we're talking about development and growth, you can easily go to any one of those items and do a drill down. And if anybody has any questions, again, in the check register, you can search. You can see who we paid, how much we paid. You can download. I mean, there are filters. It really is a place where the residents should be able to find information about what we're doing every single day.
Are we going to do social media, some sort of hay world? This is out there for you to see? Because not everybody watches City Council meetings.
Yes, along with the Balancing Act. We're launching it as a transparent tool.
Okay. All right. Excellent. Mayor Pro Tem Rogers?
I just had a question about updating. Is it going to be updated quarterly, or is it updated how things, how often should people understand that it's?
Some of the sections are going to be updated monthly. Some of them are updated as something happens. For example, if there's a CIP project that had two critical events in a month, it'll, it'll be updated. So it's really dependent, like, our assets may only update every quarter, but staff's going to update anywhere from weekly, bi-weekly to monthly.
I just wanted to make the expectations of everyone. It's not, it's not like every day Tracy's going to write every check in here. You know, she's not going to be-
Well, that's an automatic feed.
I'm just letting that expectation, so they know about how often. Thank you.
Councilmember Plunkett?
Yes, that was my question. Is that, is this part, is this something extra that they're doing with each transaction, or whatever? Or is this just as part of their daily work when they mark something done?
I'm going to let her come and talk to you. It's happening in the background.
Good. That's what I would hope.
So the financials will be uploaded monthly. So after the month, I'll upload expenses and revenue. The projects were going to be uploaded, they're going to be updated quarterly, just like we did the quarterly report, and same with the dashboards. The checkbooks are also monthly, and I think that's it. But that was kind of the timing on each of the sections. So financials and checkbooks would be monthly, but the projects and the dashboards would be quarterly.
So you might think about on that dashboard, maybe having a couple sentences or something. Again, it's just setting expectations. You know, it, next update is, or this is only updated quarterly, or just some sort of-
This is information-
Yeah, exactly. This is good to-
I have asked ClearGov because they're constantly trying to improve their product. If there can be, like, on one of the pages, it actually, like, showed a revised date, but then some of them don't. And so I've asked them to add, you know, if it's been updated, reflect that on the page. And that way, we don't have to go in there. Because I, what I'm doing on the projects is I'm literally typing in, "Updated through December 31st, updated through March 30th."
Well, and it's also on this particular page that we're on, it's, you can't see it on that screen, but we can see that it says, "Updated through March 31st," but-
Yes, I typed that in.
Yeah, but it begs the, so when's the next update? You know?
Yeah, got it. Yeah.
Yeah. Okay, great. Thank you, thank you, thank you. Council, any other questions for City Manager, Mayor Pro Tem Rogers, or Councilmember Plunkett? I have lights on.
Sorry.
No? And all the questions go away. Okay, so please play with the link. Send your questions to the City Manager, and share with your friends and your networks that that information is out there. Super happy to have that. All right, Council, we're going on to item 4H, which is a presentation regarding the current status of legislation and its impact on the city. It's a busy time at the legislature. I had the state, the Senate and the House were both approving, and I was going between the two chambers on the video streams. And the City Manager and I met this morning for a couple of hours. I updated, and Colin, I sent it to you at about 2 o'clock, and there's already changes. So I'll be doing my best to keep you up to speed. One thing, today was a fairly historic day, and I don't know if you guys know this or not, but Representative Brian Slanton was, or Slaton, I think is how he said, was expelled from the House of Representatives today. And that has not happened, the only other time it's happened was in 1927. And in 1927, a representative accepted $1,000 for influence, and he was expelled from the House chambers. Representative Slaton resigned on Saturday, and there were some folks like, why are you expelling him if he resigned? And the person who was the chair of the committee that had done the investigation explained that if you resigned, you still got paid, you remained on all your committees, you serve until someone else takes your place. And if you're expelled, like, they went into recess, and he was pulled off committees, his names removed. It's, it's like the name one will not say again. So it was a bipartisan committee that did the investigation. And I think that it's important that as elected officials, that we reflect the values of our residents and of the people that we serve. And I do think that we should be held accountable for our actions. So that was a very historical thing, that if I hadn't been tracking some other bills, I wouldn't have, like, watched that happen. I would have seen the news article, but it really wasn't the same as witnessing it firsthand. All right. So Colin, we're going to jump in. I wanted to start with the things that we're interested in. And in December of last year, on December 13th, we unanimously, you guys, unanimously approved a contract with Focused Advocacy. And they were going to help us with the quiet zone, but the main thing they were going to do was help us get the hot funds that went to the state back to us. Thankfully, Representative Gertis and Senator Schwertner wrote bills, it was House Bill 3324 and Senate Bill 2351. I testified on House Bill 3324. Turns out, we weren't the only city that would like to have some of that money back. There were a number of cities, they got mushed together. Yes, that's the technical term. And that turned into House Bill 5012. It was out of the House Ways and Means Committee on May 5, and it passed engrossment on May 8, after three amendments on May 8. And this is a potential funding source for the Convention Center Hotel, but I am pleased to inform you, at about 4 o'clock this afternoon, 5012 was approved. So that is approved, and we're happy about that. And we expect that to go through the Senate, and we are, we're happy that both Snapper and Brandon have helped us with that. And I want to thank the city attorney who made the, kind of offered up, hey, we may want to work with them. And Mr. Borquez, correct me if I'm wrong, but I believe they wrote the original bill that allowed this to happen, which was one of the reasons we went with them.
They've been involved in drafting any amendments over the years. Yes, Mayor.
So we appreciate them doing what they said they were going to do. So we're going to go into, we can go ahead, Colin. One of the, there are a gazillion bills. I knew you guys didn't want to stay here with ours with me, and you're all capable of doing the Googles, and they update them daily and minutely. But there were a couple that I wanted to talk about. Specifically, House Bill 2127 by Burrows, and Senate Bill 814 by Creighton. It really looks like this may happen. It passed the House on April 19th with a vote of 92 to 56. It has been placed on the Senate intent calendar today, and that means that they intend to discuss it. And that also means it can come up at any moment. They might be discussing it right now. They may discuss it at 1 o'clock in the morning, or they may discuss it tomorrow. But it is, it is on the intent calendar. It has, the creation of these two bills has started a new category. We used to have preemption bills. This is a super preemption bill, and it essentially eliminates home rule. It takes cities from home rule back to general law. And when I go to schools and I talk about the fact that we're a home rule city, we say that general law cities incorporate, and they generally follow the law. And home rule cities, just like when you were a youngster and it was your basketball in your basketball court, you got to make the rules of how you wanted to play basketball at your house. And so we're able to have home rules. We cannot go against the state constitution, the United States Constitution, but there's a lot of open areas that impact the day-to-day lives of our constituents. And the way this is written, anything in the field of labor, agriculture, natural resources, business and commerce, insurance, occupations, and finance, and don't ask me what the other areas are, because I'm hard pressed to come up with any other area, that we basically, you have to be a general law. You cannot do anything, even if you would like it to have, if your community would like things to be a little bit stricter, you, you can't have anything that does that. One of the biggest burdens about this is there is a whole lot of we don't know. It kind of reminds me of that fateful day that there was a lot of, we have to pass it to know what it means. This is going to be decided in courts. And when it's decided in courts, it means that it's going to be tax dollars that are paying both sides of the courtroom, and there's probably going to be more than one lawyer involved. And you're going to have to, there'll be judges that will have to decide a lot of things and bring clarity to the law. And it also means that as a municipality, there is always going to be the looming, well, maybe what I'm asking you to do is covered by House Bill 2127 or Senate Bill 814. Let's go to court and let a judge decide. One of the most important things about it is the predatory lending laws. The City Manager and I've had a lot of conversations about that. Those predatory lending laws, the substitution that I'm aware of is, as long as they were in place by January 1 of this year, that you can still have those, but you can't write any new ones. And, and what I'm concerned about is when you're a real small city, if there's not a demand, those predatory lenders don't come to your community. They go where the, it's all supply and demand. So as your community grows and there's potential supply, or there's potential demand, the free market's going to have that supply. And that means that those predatory lenders can come in, and they come in with no restrictions at all, and with this right behind them, because it was one of the reasons that they were able to do that. One of the other examples that got brought up is noise complaints. There's, when we set the decibel limits, when we do things so that the neighborhood can be enjoyed, that may very well be, well, we can't have restrictions on that anymore. One of the ones that the City Manager and I found that we were like, are you kidding me? Turns out, it gets hot in Texas. And in Dallas and in Austin, they made a rule that every four hours, if you were working outside, you had to have a 10-minute break to drink some water so that you didn't pass out from a heat stroke. Well, you can't have that ordinance. You can't have that rule anymore if this passes. So it looks like this could happen. There's lots of questions about it. Mr. Borquez, do you want, have I summarized anything incorrectly, or anything you want to add from your perspective?
No, Mayor. I think you did a great job summarizing it. Of all the bills that are out there to be concerned about, this one is worth commenting on, just because of the historic context. Texas has long been a leader and recognized in the nation as being pioneers and advocates of home rule. The fact that different cities across the state can have their own voters adopt a charter that both grants power to the city, takes power away from the city, and provides how the city will be structured. So here in Bastrop, we have a charter because your neighbors chose to do it. This bill is a direct attack against the history of home rule in Texas. It's not just from a state rep in Texas angry at a city in Texas. This is part of a nationwide effort. I was at a conference just two weeks ago, a national conference where Texas was profiled as having been a leader in home rule, which is local democracy. And now we're at the forefront on the preemption, anti-home rule front. And so I just wanted to provide that context, where this fits in. It's, it's a big deal. It's a big statement. And this, if it passes, marks a dramatic change in government relations in Texas.
And it's also interesting that, and you see that, that both of the gentlemen that are, that authored these are Republicans. And normally, the Republican Party is a less law, less government overreach, and this is, it's just kind of odd. We live in changing times. So I'm sure this will be on the news, and everybody's, I think the biggest thing that I'm concerned about is the lack of specificity, to where it's going to be sort of, we don't, we don't know what all it actually means. And I hate to be dependent on the courts to tell us that. So, Ms. Creo, is there anything else you want to add to that one? Okay. All right. So here's the next one, and this is important to us as well. House Bill 1899 by Cook and Senate Bill 603 by Hughes, and I, oh, that's why I didn't look it up. It voted, it was voted out of the House on May 4, and it today got scheduled for the Senate Jurisprudence Committee public hearing for- the Senate Jurisprudence Committee public hearing for tomorrow. And this, both of these laws, both of these bills are identical, and that makes, that helps them move a little bit faster when that happens. And what it says is, no municipality can have a juvenile curfew ordinance. You can only do it in an emergency, like if you're, if we've had a hurricane and we, it's not safe to be on the streets kind of thing, you can still do that, but you cannot have a juvenile curfew ordinance. And you guys may know that we have on our consent agenda, the juvenile curfew ordinance. So when we get to the consent agenda, we may, you guys may very well choose to pull it and table it, because it seems kind of silly to be having the second reading on an ordinance that may be out, not in sync with state law in the next week, and we'll know pretty quick if that is going to happen. What that will do is void the ordinance of 2020-09 and the one that, if it was on the consent agenda tonight, the 2023-13, those would just go away. I did reach out to the superintendent and say, hey, obviously, this is being discussed, and what is your position? And he thanked me for the opportunity to share his opinion and said that it is absolutely one of the tools that they use to try to keep kids in school to get an education. You'll remember when this was, when our ordinance was presented the first time, the way beyond vast majority of the tickets are written by BISD Police Department, but they can't write the ticket if there's not an ordinance in place. So that's why I thought it was important to reach out to Superintendent Edwards, but I also know that it looks like this is likely to happen. So we can talk about that some more on the consent agenda, but that's kind of one of those, it is what it is, but I did want you to be aware of that. And then kind of a couple, yay us. Senate Bill 1412 by Hughes and House Bill 2789 by Holland was approved by the Senate on April 28th. It was sent to the House calendars on May 2nd. It's very much, people are anticipating that it's going to be passed, and it mandates that all municipalities have to allow accessory dwelling units by rights in single-family zoned areas or unzoned areas, and our B-3 code already allows those. So this is one of those where there'll be some municipalities that'll be hurrying and hustling and trying to draft an ordinance and be asking Mr. Borquez to tell him, what do we have to do to our ordinance to update and conform with state law? And we get to say, we're already done. So yay, we're glad about that. And then one of the last ones I want to talk about is House Bill 866 and Senate Bill 494. You can see that it was, it's in the Senate Committee. I don't know if it's going to get some movement or not. Sometimes they get tapped on to other things and they turn into other numbers and you gotta, they make the score. They aren't quite as transparent as we just talked about in our last topic, but it allows submittals of applications, and they don't have to be complete. You can just turn something in and you have to vote on it. And I know, I'm going to let the city, you, you had some feelings about this this morning when we were talking.
I did, and I understand why it's in front of the legislature. As cities, sometimes we make things harder than they need to be. Our intent is protection of the overall public good, but much like the preemption bill earlier, every, every person who submits a development application has a right to be heard. They have the right to be heard before planning commission, they have the right to be heard before council. But what this one does is it forces an action when items aren't finished. And so it doesn't do anything to anybody but force you to say no, because you're not going to have complete information, especially if they're pushing it to move further along. And so what did that do to help anything? Not a whole lot, because a lot of cities have rules that say, oh, you got denied, you can't come back for 12 months. This is one of those, the law of unintended consequences. If they would just say, all right, Austin, behave, because we know this is who it's geared toward.
That's who it's directed at.
Okay, Austin, behave and deal with Austin and leave the rest of us alone. I think we could, you know, get there. This one is just, this one's a hot mess.
Well, and this one, and even back to the, to 2127, one of the things that we realize is there's 254 counties in the state of Texas, and there's over 1,500 municipalities, and it's a little bit unrealistic to think that one rule fits 1,500 municipalities of all locations and all sizes, and that seems to kind of be what we're doing. So on our next steps, it looks like there is going to be an August special session. The way special sessions work is the governor calls them and he tells you what you're going to talk about, and it looks like what they're going to talk about is property tax relief, school choice, and grid reform. That's not finalized, that could still change, but it looks like it's August and it looks like it's these topics. So that's just a little glimpse into what's going on in the legislature. There's some, there's another deadline on May 11th. There's some really great websites where you can keep up with it, and if you don't have anything else to do, it is commercial-free video streaming if you want to hear them talking about things on the floor. It's kind of interesting. It's boredom and interesting spurts of both. Ms. Creo, anything else that you would like to add?
No.
Mr. Borquez, anything?
I have this, but these are the ones that touch us.
Yeah. Mr. Borquez, anything else that you'd like to add?
Mayor, just a couple worth noting. House Bill 3135 would require that all cities perform a cost-benefit analysis before enacting any new regulations, which would include anything ranging from floodplain regulations to building codes. And so because we do update our codes from time to time, that would be an expense we'd have to factor in. The other that may catch people's attention is HB 2970, which would by right allow any manufactured home in any single-family district or any duplex district, period.
You would allow them to?
Manufactured homes on any lot in any single-family district.
It's a HUD. They have to have the HUD sticker, though, right?
Nowadays, well, nowadays, it's a HUD code manufactured home, not the old mobile home trailer type.
But it's still.
Or it would be the industrialized homes.
And there was a law, there was a bill proposed that you were not allowed to have single-family zoning, but I don't think that got out of committee. Do you know an update on that one?
I don't think it's made it out of committee.
Okay.
So the question is, at this point, now that the deadline passed, to make it out of committee, will we see some of these ideas that languished in committee appear elsewhere as amendments to bills who did clear?
And they show up on the floor as an amendment.
Yes, ma'am.
Yep. Okay. Councilmember Crouch, yes, no?
I just wanted to thank you for bringing out the details on those, those two or three bills. That was well worth the information. Thank you for doing that. And that's something we should be very concerned about with the direction we're going. So thank you for bringing that up.
Absolutely. And I will be attending the, on June 15th, TML will do a here's everything that happened. And that's one of the things that we do every other year with Mr. Borquez is, what are the things we need to do to get compliant right away? And that's why so often you'll see our ordinance say it's blah, 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 and per current state law, so that we have to minimally go back and change things. We try to take care of that. Councilmember Lee?
Thank you, Mayor. I too want to thank you for going over these. They, I have attended all of the TML webinars, but it's a lot of information.
It's a lot.
And I'm usually multitasking at the same time, so I can't catch it quite all. So I appreciate you just picking out the ones that are particular to what we might be dealing with in the future. You said the possible August special sessions was property, tax relief, school choice, and I missed the third one.
Grid reform, electric grid.
Okay, thank you, and thank you again.
You bet. All right, counsel, with that, we are done with 4H. We have nothing for 5, nothing for 6. We've already taken care of 7, and we are on the consent agenda. Anybody want to poll anything by any chance?
I definitely do.
All righty. Oh, I'm sorry. Mayor Pro Tim Rogers.
I'm the only polite one.
So we have three people who want to pull 8B. And counsel, my recommendation is that we, I think we should pull it and wait for the result, and then you guys can bring it back and talk about it, because you may, you still may or may not want to do it, but let's make sure we're conforming with state law. Councilmember Lee?
So when we bring it back, it would still be at the Second Amendment?
It would be the second reading.
Our second reading, I'm sorry.
It'd be the second reading, and a mayor who is not me will decide whether they want it on consent or not, and if it's on consent, you can always pull it for discussion.
Okay.
Is there any, anything else anybody wants pulled off consent? Anybody in the audience want anything pulled off consent? Madam Secretary, if you'll please read the consent agenda, less item 8B.
The consent agenda reads as follows. Item 8A, consider action to approve city council meeting from the April 25th, 2023 regular meeting. Item 8C, consider action to approve the second reading of ordinance number 2023-14 of the City Council of the City of Bastrop, Texas, amending the Bastrop Code of Ordinances, Chapter 13, Article 13.02. Administration proving for prorata reimbursements and cost-sharing agreements for the extension of certain water and/or wastewater lines and providing for findings of fact, repellent severability qualification, effective date, proper notice, and meeting. Item 8D, consider action to approve resolution number RA-2023-71 of the City Council of the City of Bastrop, Texas, confirming appointment by the Mayor of Dale Sheehan to place five of the Parks Board as required in Section 3.08 of the City's Charter and establishing an effective date. Item 8E, consider action to approve resolution number RA-2023-74 of the City Council of the City of Bastrop, Texas, confirming appointment by the Mayor of Chloe Bravell to place six of the Cultural Arts Commission as required in Section 3.08 of the City's Charter and establishing an effective date. Item 8F, consider action to approve resolution number RA-2023-72 of the City Council of the City of Bastrop, Texas, approving the posting of a notice for a public hearing to consider land use assumptions and a capital improvement plan relating to future public hearings for the possible adoption of roadway impact fees. This concludes the agenda item.
Thank you, Madam Secretary. Counsel?
Motion to approve.
I have a motion to approve. A second from Councilmember Lee, a second from Councilmember Crouch. You are voting on the consent agenda as written, with the exception of item 8B. Madam Secretary, if you'll call the roll.
Councilmember Lee?
Yes.
Councilmember Crouch?
Yes.
Councilmember Plunkett?
Yes.
Mayor Pro Tim Rogers?
Yes.
Councilmember Kirkland?
Yes.
Thank you, counsel. The motion passes unanimously. With the item pulled off the agenda, Alan, is it cleaner if we have an action on it, or can we leave it, do we, I feel like we need a motion to table it. Yes.
That is an option, Mayor.
So 8B has been pulled, I'm happy to take a motion. Councilmember Kirkland?
Motion to table 8B until the Texas Legislature has resolved the pending issue before them.
I have a motion from Councilmember Kirkland.
A second.
And a second from Councilmember Crouch. We are tabling 8B until after the 88th legislative session is completed, and we know the status of that, of those rules. You clear what you're voting on?
I have a question.
Mayor Pro Tim Rogers?
So does the current ordinance stand until it's tabled, so they can still write tickets and stuff?
Yes, ma'am. That's how I understand it, because what we're talking about hasn't passed yet.
Well, no, I just want to make sure it didn't have an expiration or anything.
We do have to renew ours every three years, and so, and I don't remember what the expiration date is on that one.
Oh, good question.
I'll have to look it up. I think Chief knows.
Does it expire on the 30th anniversary of the last one? It expires here.
So right now, the whole ordinance?
No citations right now. And they're out of school in two weeks, too.
I just was going to make sure that we, there's still a curfew, even though it's not school time. Just make sure we communicate with BISD, so nobody does. So that's all.
So Chief Stefanik, you'll let BISD know that the ordinance has expired?
I do.
Okay. And counsel, the motion on the floor is to table it until after the legislative session, until we know for sure the answer one way or the other. Are we clear? Mayor Pro Tim Rogers, another question? No? Yes, no? Councilmember Kirkland, I think you're getting ready to vote, right? All right. Madam Secretary, if you'll call the roll.
Councilmember Kirkland?
Yes.
Councilmember Crouch?
Yes.
Councilmember Lee?
Yes.
Councilmember Plunkett?
Yes.
Mayor Pro Tim Rogers?
Yes.
Thank you, counsel. Counsel, we're moving on to items for individual consideration. Item 9A, consider action on Resolution 2023-73 of the City Council of the City of Bastrop, Texas, approving Second Amendment to the Development and Annexation Agreement between the City of Bastrop and Bastrop Colorado Bend LLC, and authorizing the mayor to execute the amendment on behalf of the City of Bastrop. Ms. Creo?
Thank you, Mayor, counsel. This has, this has probably been one of the most ping pong I've played in a long time within the development agreement, and I thank Bill and his team for working with Alan and I as we tried to craft something that was in really everybody's best interest. So if counsel recalls, we decided that the best way to incent Colorado Bend was not to incent Colorado Bend, but rather create a joint project between the BEDC and the City Council that would not only serve Colorado Bend, but that entire area, including the industrial park and including some areas off of Lover's Lane. Included in that was the need to amend the agreement that had certain things in place for the Colorado Bend project. So I'll go over those things for the folks at home, because this isn't on the PowerPoint. So as structured, if you recall, Segment 1, which was the road parallel to Margie's Way, was going to be required right of way, dedicated, and built. There was a lot of consternation about access off of that road, et cetera, et cetera. We agreed to allow a game fence to be up on that road for the right of way to be reserved for 10 years or until such a time as the transportation plan was amended, and then that property could revert back to Colorado Bend. If the city needed it and that transportation plan was not amended, it would remain the city's, it'd be dedicated to us, and we would build the road. However, if the city built the road, then Colorado Bend would need to match the fence that's parallel to Lover's Lane, which includes the stone fence and facade and the trees and the lighting that were shown on the original site plan. The city will not waive impact or permit fees, and that's really from the component of BEDC is truly fronting the money for the project, and we, today, you passed the second reading of developer prorata. So as folks tie onto that line, BEDC will receive their money back, which just allows that engine to continue to feed itself. Of concern was how quickly the project would be completed in terms of infrastructure. And so we've given a fallback position in the contract that allows them to receive a temporary certificate of occupancy so long as they have a mechanism for sewer, water, and emergency fire protection. That could be portable toilets, that could be a temporary septic system, that could be a variety of things, but that's up to them and our folks to agree to, specifically the fire chief, that they can do that. And there's a timeline for them to tie on, so they must tie on within 12 months of those items being made available. We would work with BEDC to make sure that we build those water and wastewater lines. And in fact, there's an item in front of the BEDC board on Monday to talk about this very project and how we can advance it forward that much quicker. Colorado Bend shall have no access off of Segment 1, and again, that is the road that's parallel to Margie's Way, and any gate that exists there right now must be removed, and all of their access should be off of Lover's Lane. And on Lover's Lane, there'll be no queuing on Lover's Lane. Things have to be set back far enough so that all of the queuing happens on the site, so that we're not causing additional traffic back up on Lover's Lane. That street was a conversation when we went, we met with the city, the county, and the school in our biweekly meetings, and it, really, when you talk about the county is putting their main purchasing building on Lover's Lane, and the city's planning, the school is planning to put their main purchasing building at their Lover's Lane site, as well as a public safety building, you can imagine the traffic that's already going to be created on Lover's Lane. Within the project, within the BEDC and city project is South Street, which will give some, alleviate some of the traffic, but we are going to have to, I think, address Lover's Lane sooner rather than later with our partners. We will endeavor to complete the project within 16 months of the notice to proceed, again, working through that with BEDC and figuring out if that's something that we need to maybe carve out of the area development plan as the rest of the park engineering gets. need to maybe carve out of the area development plan as the rest of the park engineering gets built out. And included in the original agreement was that we would provide expedited review and permitting services, and they would have their first plan review cycle within 21 days. So that's nothing new. We're doing things within 21 days anyway on the commercial end. So I think it's a win-win. I think the project ends up boasting a greater bang for the buck. EDC gets their money back, and Colorado Bend can put a shovel in the ground.
Alcinday, thank you for the summary. Councilmember Crouch?
I just had a couple of questions with some of the items. One of, one of them was the fence. It was kind of vaguely mentioned, and it was also in very much detail mentioned how the fence was going to be built. And I was just wondering if we needed to have more of a specification for the fence on Lover's Lane? If it's, we have to list out specifically if it's stone, berm, I mean, because there was, there was, like I said, there was some vague description in here, and then there was some very detailed. Do we need, do we need to have some more information put in for the fence of the agreement?
That's always good to have a picture, and the more specificity of what you wanted built and expected to be built there. I think everybody saw a picture of what should be built there, and the expectation is if we build that second segment, that that street be built that way. So we can very much include the site plan details into any agreement and refer to it as an exhibit, huh, Alan?
We can, but I think, wasn't that deleted, that?
No.
Portion?
No, they don't have to build the fence on that segment, because they can put a game fence. But if the city has to build the road, then they have to match. The stone fence and landscaping still has to be built on the Lover's Lane portion.
Bill McLean for Bastrop, Colorado Bend. I think we also have still the requirement for a public frontage plan. So for, since it's been amended to only be on Lover's, I think that'll have to be updated and submitted. Brendan's not here tonight, and that's kind of a Brendan question, but because he knows the status of that approval the first time it went through better than I do. But I think that's the case.
That's a good point. Yes, there is a public frontage requirement. There's a public space requirement. That's a good point.
So between Bill, Mr. Borquez, and Ms. Creo, how would a councilperson make a motion that would address that? Because this is a resolution. So if we're trying to get this done tonight, we're making sausage on the dais.
Mayor, the resolution is to approve the Second Amendment to the development agreement. And as worded, it says that a public frontage plan, this is for the Lover's Lane portion, not for the rest of that extension. It was the rest of the extension that was deleted.
Yes.
And the concept plan for that extension that was deleted. But for the Lover's Lane portion only, it says there will be a public frontage plan detailing the privacy fencing and wall along Lover's Lane that shall, to the extent, have native stone materials, street lining, landscaping to be incorporated into that design.
Perfect, there it is.
And then there's Exhibit B that shows the things that Councilman Crouch was referring to.
So do we believe that we've adequately addressed the, if that road is built, that it'll match what's on Lover's Lane?
I think that's what it says.
Okay. All right. Councilmember Crouch?
I had a question with the timeline on tying in the water in the sewer one year after the date. One or the other one is available. Can you explain?
That really was the consideration, because they're not sure if they're going to install a septic system to get them over the hump or what they're going to do. So if there's going to be some significant improvement or significant investment into the septic system, it gives them time to tie on. Also knowing that when they tie on, they have to pay their impact fees. So that's going to come probably with a pretty hefty price tag, depending on the LUEs that are on the site. So it's just giving somebody notice that you're going to have to do this within a certain time period. Plus, putting that time period in the development agreement keeps them from going, oh, yeah, I'm not going to do it tomorrow. I got a couple more months.
Yeah, well, I was reading it as either, either or. So you, if the water's there, you have to tie it in within a year, or the sewer, whichever one is first, right?
Correct, correct.
So they're going to have to tie into something 12 months?
Soon as it's made available, yes.
Okay.
And he wants to tie on. Nobody, nobody really wants to be on well or septic, I don't think.
Yeah, I agree. You know, I agree with everything Sylvia's explanation, spot on.
That's awesome. Can we, like, frame that moment in time? Sorry, I just, it's awesome to hear. Thank you very much for helping us out. And the, the other part that we all know is those impact fees generally only go one direction. So that, that's also an incentive. The sooner you pay them, the, you know for sure what they're going to be.
Yeah. And I do want to echo what Sylvia said about working with y'all's staff, your, your city attorney, your, your city manager especially. It's been a pleasure. We haven't agreed on everything. And I appreciate y'all's patience, y'all's tolerance with us, and getting us to this point. It's been a lot of hard work, but we really appreciate y'all very much.
Excellent. We appreciate you as well. Councilmember Crouch, you said a few, and that's two. Any more?
Yeah, one more.
Okay.
Under owner's options regarding the public facilities, there was Paragraph C. And it's, the event the owner elects to complete the public facilities, the city agrees it all other cities' rights, title, and interest in the plan, specifications, designs, easements. That paragraph, can, can you explain that to me a little bit?
That was.
Why that would, what scenario that would fall under?
If, if, for whatever reason, we couldn't complete the project, and they said, we have a contractor ready, willing, and able to do it, and we can do it within budget and time, and et cetera, et cetera.
So not very likely, but?
No.
It's in there just in case?
Yes.
That's Mr. McLean protecting his, his client and making sure we've got options on both sides.
Yeah. Okay. Thank you, that was all I had.
Thank you, Councilmember Crouch. I appreciate you reading it so thoroughly. Are there other council members with questions? Anyone feel like making a motion?
I move to approve.
I have a motion to approve from Mayor Pro Tim Rogers.
Second.
And a second from Councilmember Plunkett. Counsel, you're voting on Resolution 2023-73. Are you clear on what you're voting on? Madam Secretary, if you'll call the roll.
Mayor Pro Tim Rogers?
Yes.
Councilmember Plunkett?
Yes.
Councilmember Lee?
Yes.
Councilmember Crouch?
Yes.
Councilmember Kirkland?
Yes.
Thank you, counsel. The motion passes unanimously. Counsel, we're on the top of Page 4, also known as the last page. We're on item 9B. Consider action to increase the budget for administrative segment for community event support by $10,000 to cover increased permitting requirements by Texas Department of Transportation. Ms. Creo?
Mayor and counsel, this is, this is one of those ones that, man, I hate to bring you back, but it was just absolutely necessary. TexasDOT had been historically lenient in any time we have a parade route that crosses Chestnut and Main. Not necessarily so anymore. And so there is an increased cost to folks who are going to be applying for a parade permit, and we did not factor in any of those costs to those community assets. So instead of ta-da, surprising them with a bill at the time of application of further permit, my suggestion was that we eat this one, so to speak, and then work it into the budget for next year.
Thank you, Ms. Creo. And when we talked about this at the budget review, the other part was it seems silly to give the people having the parade a little bit more money to give us that money back to, you know, it was like, let's just do it once and be, be done, and then we'll take care of it properly for the rest of the budget. Are you guys clear? At the end of the day, what we're trying to do is keep our citizens safe when we're having parades in town. That's really the bottom line. Councilmember Lee, your light, son?
Oh, sorry. But I will say thank you for the consideration, and I'll make a motion to approve.
I have a motion to approve from Councilmember Lee.
Second.
And a second from Councilmember Crouch. Councilmember Kirkland?
Yes, question. In what situations is a permit required from TexasDOT?
Anytime we are crossing Main and Chestnut. So for example, the Homecoming Parade, Juneteenth Parade, or any one of the parades that are crossing.
Christmas Parade?
Christmas Parade, correct. What has, again, we're going to talk about process. Our internal process has us really putting PD and some very expensive assets out there. I've asked Vicky to work to revamp that, because there are some scenarios where perhaps a police officer isn't required. And the way we request resources to cover those kinds of parades, whether we are paying a sheriff's deputy at Bastrop Police, or whomever it is that comes to help, as well as the permit application fee, et cetera, et cetera.
Which reminds me, there's also a bill in good standing that if you are a veteran and licensed security, that you can serve as a peace officer. And that was a way that there may be veterans that could work a couple parades and be security, so we'll see if that happens.
How does this, how does that permit impact non-city parades, like, you know, March for Jesus, or something where someone's got a permit to have a, some sort of a mass event, and then they march down Main Street? So how does that?
There will be increased permit costs.
Okay.
Everybody, if you cross 150, we have to have increased traffic control and increased security, and somebody's got to pick up the bill.
There's a specific permit and plan that we have to submit to TexasDOT.
And what is the cost of that? I mean, approximately, like, is it?
We, we said it was about $5,000 per parade.
And is that regardless of the length of the event?
As, even if it just crosses that, that segment.
Yeah. If, if the parade's a whole lot longer, but for the most part, setting it all up and taking it all down, even the Christmas parade is less time than it takes to do all of that stuff.
The city parades, I completely understand. I'm thinking more of the community events that are not city parades.
And so you guys will get to talk about that in the budget, whether you want to cover that or don't cover that, and who, who gets to pick up. One of the things that I visited with Trey about, and I think the city manager and I visited about it as well, is have, hi, these are our approved parade routes that already have the approved TexasDOT traffic control and that kind of thing. And if you pick Route A, it's $8,000. If you pick Route B, it's $2,000. And so we'll have like two or possibly three routes, and there'll be a price associated with those routes. And then we are, and there'll be pre-approved traffic control from TexasDOT, so that we're not chasing the permits, and it's less work for everybody. And it's a known entity and price, and then you guys can decide how much of it you want. To your point, non-city people, do they pick up 100% of it? Do they pick up 50%? You know, what, y'all get to make whatever rules you want about that, but what staff's going to bring you is the actual facts of what it's going to cost to be able to do that safely. Did I summarize that correctly?
Yes. And, and the other item to consider when we throw in parade routes and what costs what is, there are some Main Street business owners who go, hey, yeah, great, that's a great event, but it really doesn't bring a whole lot of business to me, and you've now closed the street. So it just gets us to be just a little more cognizant of, of what is going on and what their return on investment is for something like that. It's great to have community pride. It's great to be able to support certain kind of events, but if they're having a detrimental impact on the businesses in the Main Street area, which are, you know, as we know, a great economic engine, then we really should be saying, this is probably the alternate parade route you should take.
What's the cost of one of the permits today for the gatherings that I'm referring to? And, I mean, it might, the answer might be, it depends, but just, you know, ballpark it.
We just, as a matter of fact, the Walk for Jesus, March for Jesus.
March for Jesus.
March for Jesus. They opted to not request any dollars or any assistance. They raised the funds and they, they paid the fee. Terry isn't here. Do you know Trey by chance, or Tracy?
Looks like Chief Stefanik may know. You have to come to a mic, or no one knows that you know.
I think Mr. Joe's saying 5,500. 1,500, thank you.
Good evening, Mayor and counsel.
Good evening.
So it is about 1,500 just for everything except security. Because it is not a parade, it's more like an escort, it would cost approximately $2,000 to $3,000 in security for the March for Jesus.
And in this new model, they would say add $8,000 or so on top of that because of the TexasDOT permit, is that?
It's not just because of the permit, it's also because of all the barricades that are involved and the rerouting of traffic. And that also includes security, in some cases, security guards, but primarily it's the cost of setting up the, the actual route.
Okay. Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
I wanted to understand, thank you.
All right, counsel.
It's getting pretty expensive.
Yeah.
Yeah. Counsel, we have a motion and a second. Is there any further discussion? Councilmember Crouch? Know you're going to vote, or?
Yeah, I just, I just wanted to point out what city manager said, that TexasDOT has been very lenient with us crossing Chestnut Street, not having to have a permit except for the last Christmas parade, I think, is when we started traffic control. And so that's just going to be the standard cost for it. So we, we could look at, or we should look at, maybe an alternate route for smaller parades that don't have to cross Chestnut, and we could just have them up and down Pine Street, or Spring Street, or Fisherman's Park.
That's the intention of having two or three established routes.
We're, we're just lucky that we haven't had to pay all that traffic control and, and permit costs previously. So that's, that's all I wanted to mention.
Thank you, Councilmember Crouch. I think we're the most lucky that nobody's been hurt, because people have driven past security and a few other things. So I have a motion from Councilmember Lee, I have a second from Councilmember Crouch. Are you clear on what you are voting on? Madam Secretary, if you'll call the roll.